Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Monday, October 27, 2025, and it is 1:30 PM. We are here this afternoon for a work session with Community Planning Infrastructure Resources. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. With me are my fellow Commissioners, Commissioner John Kofalas and Commissioner Jody Shattuck-McNally. We have our county manager with us, Loretta Volker. A lot of guests in the audience today at the table. We have Leslie Ellis, our Community Planning Infrastructure Resources Director. We also have Laura Bolt and Louise Romero joining us from The Ranch, and we'll be providing an annual fair update, which we're excited to hear. So, welcome, everyone. I don't know who's going to get us started.
I'll just pass it on very quickly. Leslie Ellis, so you've introduced our colleagues from The Ranch here, and we're excited to do the annual update on the fair and rodeo and how it all went this year in 2025. So, with no further ado, I'll pass it along, and you also have handouts up at the dais there for you as well.
Yes, thank you. So, you have our annual report, which has gone live on the website today as well. So, you can find that under the Larimer County Fair, and if you scroll down to the bottom of the page, you can see our annual report on there. So, we had a successful fair again, very excited. So, as you know, it usually starts with our parade, which is downtown the Saturday before. We had 51 floats, and we had, which were local organizations, 4-H clubs, local businesses, and our county commissioners. The parade drew around 2,600 spectators this year, which kicked off a week full with heart and hometown pride. So, our theme this year was "Lovers in the Fair." So, it seemed very popular. Everyone got on board behind it, so we're very happy with that. We started the fair at 5:30, a little bit later with our Indigenous blessing, which drew a really large crowd this year. So, I think the later timing was a bit way more successful for those guys. Attendants, we had a total of 103, 800 guests. So, we always count our fair from our very first 4-H activity, which is usually our dogs, and then we end with the Junior Livestock Sale, the day after fair, which is August 6. So, that's the entire time throughout the fair. The fair is always free to everyone to come. The only activities that you pay for would be for your carnival and for the actual rodeo. Everything else is free to attend. So, we saw probably about 5% increase from 2024 to 2025 with our attendance. The rodeo attendance drew 8,991 people across the three shows. The Junior Livestock Sale, I'll let Laura talk about in a minute, once again raised over $1 million for our 4-H members, which was fantastic. We had the largest pancake breakfast on record with 2,129 attendees. We were, yeah, very surprised, which is fantastic. We also had an increase of vendors. So, we had 71 vendors, 34 outdoor, 37 indoor. So, that's an addition of 17 vendors over 2024. Sensory Day, this area I'm very proud of, it drew 952 guests, nearly 1,000 guests. So, we started with 168 four years ago, and that has really expanded. So, very proud about that one. Carnival, again, was also up, up 6%. We sold 251,114 tickets across the carnival time, and we use Placer AI, which helps give us a little bit of an indication. It's a geofencing mechanism that lets us know how many cell phones are there and within the region. So, we got a bit of an idea that they, most people spend 139 minutes at the fair. So, that's a pretty long time. So, that's a good metric. All our entertainment, we had Outlaw Mariachi, School of Rock, Soul School, Colorado Keys, 90 Stills Dawn, and the Bourbon Brass Band, the local Fort Collins Band that you probably see wandering around here as well a lot. So, that was fantastic. Entertainment, we had Canine Stars, Global Death, Drone Racing, Vaulting, and Mounted Shooting, Draft Horse Pony Rides, and CSU STEM Energy Zone. We added this year a Jim's Wings eating competition, which drew a big crowd. It was pretty hard to watch, but it was pretty fantastic. We also, we're pretty excited. We invited the kids entrepreneurial market to attend this year. So, over Saturday and Sunday, we had 115 youth vendors with Vandeville showcasing all of their own creations. So, those children are probably around middle age. There's no high school students. They're actually quite young students. So, very excited that they joined us and would love to return next year. We had the fireworks. We used our fair app. We saw some adoption with that. We also added in Spanish as a second language, so that everybody had the opportunity to understand what was happening with us. We, let me see. I'm going to pass it over to 4-H Livestock and Exhibits with Ms. Laura Bolt.
We have a summary. We had 478 exhibitors and the livestock, which is 927 animals. We saw an increase in beef cattle and also in goats, meat goats. Everybody else kind of held their own or went down just a few. General projects, we had 359 exhibitors for a total of 556 projects. Total 4-H youth participation was 837 youth with 1,483 total entries. A lot more classes. Those are just the animals, but a lot more classes. Open class grew to 332 exhibitors with 1,142 entries. So, overall, an increase in open class. Junior Livestock Sale, we had 264 animals that sold for $1,071,758. So, we were down slightly on the overall total, about $20,000. But still a good show, and we changed our time from 5:00 PM to 1:00 PM, and most everybody liked that earlier start time.
Thank you. Anything else? You've already given us a lot.
I'm still going. So, we can also now gauge where all of our visitors come from. So, our highest amount was from Fort Collins and Loveland, Windsor, Berthardt, Wellington, La Porte. We also see people come from Greeley and as far as Longmont to the county fair. We also had over 30 volunteers helping out with us this year. And then I just want to do a shout out to our fairboard, Stephanie Morrison, who's our chair, Tiffany Bending, Olive Borg, Vera Brown, Jay Kraus, Logan Lenz, Christine Miller, Becky Walters, Michelle Wilcox, Pat Young, and Melinda Deal. So, our rodeo board is Rick Harris, Randy Edmonds, Rain Rule, and Sharon Fancher. For next year, we do have some goals that we're hoping to achieve. It will be our very first fair on our new event lawn. So, maybe a little bit of patience. We'll see how we go with that. We're excited to open it all. We're also looking to integrate, hopefully, a new convention center in the future as well. We will be celebrating America's birthday. We'll be 250 years old, and Colorado will be 150 years old. And we were lucky enough to be awarded a drone show. So, that drone show will happen on the Sunday night. We will still have our fireworks on Friday and Saturday, and obviously, the kids entrepreneurial market will return with us, and we're just excited how we're going to have the Vendelay Outlook and how everything's going to be for 2026. Very excited.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Commissioner Shattuck-McNally.
First and foremost, amazing, tremendous. We just appreciate you all, the things you do. I felt it, saw it, sensed it the whole time we were there, that it was a record-breaking fair and rodeo. We felt it at the rodeo, the course of Pancake Breakfast. We were like, whoa, what's happening? But I, which was great, and I just, it, you know, I was there a lot, and the energy was so positive. And, you know, there was a lot of reasons people could have felt uncomfortable with just a lot of the tensions and things, but everyone seemed to be, you know, a lot of parents still, just like the year before, they felt like they could sit at the watering hole and hang on a picnic table and have a snack, and while their kids were enjoying the carnival and seeing some of the things, and they felt safe. They felt their families were safe, and it just was really a community-building event. I had a lot of folks would say, are you here? Are you done? Can you come meet with me for a minute? And so, I did a lot of that. And I just wanted to just commend you all for just a job well done. It's great that it just keeps getting better and evolving, and we are kind of responding to our communities' interests and needs and community-driven, community-focused. And you all do just an outstanding job. You go above and beyond all the time, and I just wanted to say, well done, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kofalas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for, yes, absolutely well done. It's indeed a team effort, all the volunteers that participate, the rodeo board, the fair board. I mean, it was an amazing event. It was a lot of fun. I always appreciate the junior livestock and the opportunity to do a little bit of the add-on. That's not going to bid on a cow to bring home. But one thing I really appreciate is that whenever I do that, the 4-H participants who have received the add-on dollars, they always write a nice thank you letter, and sometimes they include photographs, and just, that's a really nice thing. And I think that encourages the youth to continue, you know, to that positive reinforcement, and it's a good positive reinforcement for me. I wonder, a couple of questions, if I may. So, you all did an outstanding job. I think we can all appreciate and embrace that. And the way you're able to track things, I think that's great using the technology. My questions are, one is, the fellow, I can't remember, the elder cowboy who did the performances at the rodeo, his name, and then we learned that he passed away somewhat after that. And I seem to recall that Connor, you all were going to do something special for him. I wonder if you have been able to do that. That's one question I have. What's the fellow's name, the cowboy, who was amazing with his horse?
There's videos on my phone.
No, actually, I do too, and I had a number of people reach out to me saying they just liked that so much and were aware that he had passed on. But were we able to do like something special for his family or something afterwards?
I know that we don't have anything at the ranch, but I do know that the rodeo board had sent the family.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, their condolences and some other things for them, but I think we were very lucky to be one of his last performances.
Yeah, very lucky.
Well, thank you. And I guess another question I have is, so in terms of any other lessons learned, ways to improve, I think one thing you mentioned, Louise, that doing the start of the fair and rodeo, moving it from 4 o'clock or whatever it was to 5:30, that made a difference in terms of the people who were able to see the Iron Family dance and do blessings. That was one thing. You mentioned about the Great Lawn is going to be very different, and I presume that you're informing the vendors to not expect a dip in the Great Lawn. But I wonder, are there other lessons learned, other ways to improve upon things? How do we accommodate the fact that we had so many people who wanted pancakes and ham, you know, things of that nature? Anything else you all are thinking about?
Yes. To be honest with you, we actually had the pancake breakfast. We listed it closing at different times, and I think making sure that we're consistent with our closing times. The pancake breakfast is seven until nine. That is its correct timing. We'll make sure that we follow up with that. One thing we did receive was, with so many more people attending the sensory day, the logistically, once they're down in the carnival, because they don't open their food stores until the public starts, people found it difficult to get water. So, we've kindly had a public donation of a pallet of water that we can now hand out free water to them when they're down there for sensory time. Also, maybe looking at how we can get that line through a lot quicker, because a lot of people were standing for a very long time, and we do give out an invitation. So, it's not a ticket. It's a handwritten invitation with the family's name on it, to make sure that we're getting the right people through during that time, because the carnival is free. And we just found that line was a little slow. So, things for us to work on definitely.
And you're, may I just a little bit more. So, in terms of, part of my question, what was embedded in there is, with the very significant changes being done for the Great Lawn, I mean, how are we informing vendors that they should expect a different kind of layout, terrain?
Let us ask you a question. We are starting internal conversations first. So, there'll be logistical We are starting, um, internal conversations first. So there'll be logistical changes, and we want to make sure that we can, um, lay it out in a way that is gonna work for vendors, that it's gonna work for the public as they come through, um, parking, what's the best way to flow traffic through. So we are starting those meetings, and we're gonna start internally. We have, uh, Lindsay, who has joined us, who's our engineer, and she's gonna be working on, um, suggestions for us. Um, so we still have a little bit to go yet. So we don't have all your answers just yet.
And last question, please, and that is, oh, I, I don't know if you referenced the, um, the parade. Uh, uh, it, it looks like attendance, based on the AI technology or whatever, was down.
Yes.
Any, any insights there regarding future parades and all of that?
Um, not, not as yet. We're investigating that. Um, the parade is a, a larger expense than what we have had in past years. To make it safe, we do need to pay the city of Loveland's police to be there. Um, we have had to pay Loveland barricade to barricade the roads. So the expense has gone up a little bit for us, and we are investigating avenues in which we can work with the city of Loveland or other options to hose the parade in different ways.
And I always appreciate when Pat Young is at the same pickup point, because I come in before I park my car, and he's there with a little golf cart. And then we have a big discussion about whether I want to walk to where we're supposed to be or whether he wants to drive me. So that's always fun. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I thought the fair went very well, and it's great to have the numbers to back that up. Um, you know, some of the things that Commissioner Kavals was asking about were obviously, as the fair board, um, mulling over, right? I mean, we did, you know, there was, the parade was noticeably smaller attendance. And what does it look like to have an event afterwards or to make sure we tie it into the fair? Other, other possibilities for the parade are also being, you know, uh, no pun intended, floated about. Uh, but, uh, so I think that, you know, I think that the fair board is, you know, really conscious about, you know, helping you, you all at the ranch, kind of, you know, how do we, um, you know, with, with the breakfast, the different times, I think, affected things. Also, you know, is there a point at which we want to cap how many people come through? Or, you know, are the hours enough? Or do we promote just to 4H families? And so, you know, there's, I think that there are a lot of discussions going on around that. I think most people honestly were fine with the fair. I think that if they showed up even at the end, they were still getting pancakes. I, there were, there were very few people that didn't at least get a pancake. And so, um, you know, for, for, in large part, it was really successful. There were a couple people at the end who weren't as happy, but, I mean, I think if ninety-five percent of the people were happy, we probably did a pretty good job. So,
I agree.
Yeah. So, I mean, to, these conversations can, will continue in the fair board, and we can certainly update the other commissioners as, as we, if we make any changes or, or try to do anything different. But I, thank you for calling out the names of the fair board and the, and the rodeo board. I think that that was really nice, because these are folks that spend, um, many, many hours at the fair. While the average person spends a hundred and thirty-nine minutes, they, uh, um, they definitely spend more like twelve to fourteen hours a day during fair. So, and all of you too. Laura, we're, you know, I see Laura and, um, I think like, oh my God, have you eaten? Can we get you some food? So, um, good. She got a pancake. There you go. Well, then we did our job. Excellent. All right. Well, thank you very much for being here. Anything else, anything further before we, no? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt. Oh, where'd Matt go? Are you prepared to do item two? Oh, there it is. Okay, good.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. Um, I'm joined by Matt Lafferty, Principal Planner with Community Development, to continue the conversation that we briefly started at last Monday's work session about the proposed expedited review process for affordable housing projects. And just as a reminder to set the context, uh, the county has opted in to Proposition 123, um, which helped, helped us establish a baseline of affordable housing units and a target goal for new affordable housing units to be constructed over a three-year period. Um, one of the requirements, uh, one of our obligations under Proposition 123 is to create a process, um, that ensures that affordable housing projects can make it through county processes, um, certain county processes within ninety days, um, which is an expedited review. And we have been exploring how other Colorado communities who have also opted in, how they have been accomplishing, um, this expedited process, um, looking at what, um, Fort Collins is doing, Windsor, Greeley, others in the region, to, to look at comparables, and then evaluating what makes sense for the context for Larimer County, where we don't see big multi-family affordable housing, um, developments. Um, the affordable housing that exists in Larimer County tends to be more in the form of naturally affordable housing that was built at an affordable level to begin with, um, mobile home parks, um, accessory dwelling units, so more individual units, smaller scale. Um, so reflecting that, we wanted to make sure we came up with a process that would be straightforward, could be flexible based on the types of projects that, that we may actually see in the future, but also not, not overkill it in term, in terms of coming up with a, a really detailed, in-depth process that we may not frequently use. Um, so Matt can explain a little bit more about, um, what is proposed, and, uh, then we can talk a little bit about the, the process and next steps.
Thanks. I think she pretty well covered it. Um, sorry, I was running in and out, but, uh, Matt Lafferty, Principal Planner, Community Development Department. Um, as Rebecca was saying, uh, you know, we're working on this expedited review process. It comes from Proposition 123, which was adopted in November of 2022, um, made three hundred million dollars available to affording, affordable housing projects in communities that were participating in the 123 effort. Um, to be a participating municipality, um, you had to commit to certain things. One of them, as Rebecca was covering, means we have to come up with a nine percent increase, three percent for three years of affordable housing units, which is a hundred and thirteen units in Larimer County. And the second thing we needed to do was implement by, uh, the end of 2026, an expedited review process, um, for affordable housing projects or projects that qualify as affordable housing projects. Um, as you know, the county opted into the program in 2023, and, uh, we're now pursuing this expedited review process a year early, because DOLA is offering fifty thousand dollars worth of grant funds, um, if we can get it done prior to the end of this year. And so we thought that that would be something worthy of seeking. Um, so what is affordable housing according to Proposition 123? Well, it's, it's one of two things. It's either rental housing that's at or below the sixty percent, uh, AMI for, uh, a local area, which is the area's median income, and less than thirty percent of the annual income of the person renting it. Or it's ha, housing that can be purchased by a household with an annual income at or below a hundred percent of the average, um, median income for the area, um, with a mortgage payment that is less than thirty percent of their monthly income. And that's what determines what is affordable. According to Proposition 123, um, if a project comes forward that has a minimum of fifty percent affordable housing, which is a fairly big number, um, then it qualifies for an expedited review process if you have one available. So, um, even though this is not a mandatory process, meaning a developer could choose to opt into the program and go through the expedited review process or opt out of the process, it's really up to the applicant's, um, choice, um, depending upon the complexity of their project. As, uh, presented in the information I gave you, there are, the state did define that there are processes that are maybe not pros, uh, appropriate for an expedited review. So if you're going through a full subdivision process, those can take anywhere from a year to two years to process and get through. Um, land divisions were excluded. Rezonings, which usually require public hearings, were excluded, and special reviews and appeal applications as well. So that left the county with a couple of processes that will be subject to expedited review if we adopt this. One of them is site plan review, which generally covers housing developments of, uh, of a nature that's more than duplexes. So triplexes, fourplexes, um, apartments, those types of uses. Condos typically fall under our site planning process, which is an administrative process, meaning there is no public hearing process to it. It's just processed through the staff. And so we feel we can get those done in ninety days if we're working coordinating closely with the applicants. That process would be done in ninety days. And then the following process after that would be getting actual building permits for the project, and that follows its own ninety-day expedited review process. And that's how it was defined by the state. So those are the processes that our expedited review would be subject to. Um, just, uh, as Rebecca was noting, uh, the expedited review process needs to be completed within a ninety-day period. Um, if it can't be completed within a ninety-day period because, uh, we're getting close to the end of the review and the applicant still has a lot of work to do, the applicant can request a ninety-day extension. Um, if during the process, uh, the planning staff has issues or the, or one of our referral agency has issues that are bigger than normal, we can ask for a thirty-day, uh, extension from a staff perspective. And that needs to be confirmed by the applicant in writing. We would confirm it with them in writing, that they accept that within a five-day period. If at the end of ten days, um, they don't respond, we consider that an extension, and we would move thirty days onto the project. Those extensions are added to the end of the ninety days. So in the event of the applicant asking, it's an additional ninety days. It's additional thirty days for staff. Um, to look at the review process, just really quick, quickly, um, the review process, which is on the screen, would start with a pre-application conference. The applicant comes in, meets with staff. We, um, cover what type of application materials they need to submit, um, and what constitutes a complete application. Um, they would then assemble their application, and they would be responsible for submitting it. Upon submittal, we would do a completeness check to make sure all the proper information was submitted and that it, it looks reviewable. If it is, then we would accept the application, and the referral period would start. That's when the ninety days starts clicking. Um, staff would then, and our referral agencies would then have twenty-one days to review the application. We would turn the information at, upon that twenty-one days to the applicant, and they would have a twenty-one day to respond to us with corrected plans and, and updated, um, application materials. We would complete that process, continue that process until either we can accept the application for approval or the ninety days has come to, um, to its end. At the end of the application period, if the applicant still has not met our standards, then the application would be denied, or they could ask for the ninety-day continuance, or, uh, extension to continue in that. Um, again, after that's done and the project's accepted, then it just moves into the typical building permit process, and we should have no problem in reviewing plans within the ninety days for that. So that kind of is the expedited review process. If we can get this completed, um, in the next couple of weeks, then we'll turn it in for, uh, DOLA to review, and hopefully we would be eligible for the grant funds this year.
And so just to add, in terms of process steps, this will follow a slightly different process than our typical code changes, um, because DOLA has suggested the adoption of a resolution. Um, supporting the expedited review is, um, a helpful, helpful action to take. Um, we want to make sure that we are, we are checking all the right boxes to get the fifty thousand dollar incentive from the state. Um, so the first step would be a resolution that goes to admin matters, either on consent or discussion, at your discretion. Um, and then we would process a code change that also incorporates some language into the land use code documenting that this, this, um, expedited review option is in place.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Shannick McHale?
Actually, I'm shaking my head, but no, I do. Um, it's Monday. I'm thinking, do I want to ask this question? So I just want to be clear. Um, you, all these slides, we can, I don't, maybe they were sent to us already, and I just haven't seen them. It's been a busy weekend, but we'll have those. And, um, the resolution is, because this is what they requested, um, and, and these, this is, um, just this, um,
Commissioner, that would be the procedure.
Procedure. And then, um, and this would be just those, it sounds like two, um, two application types or only two that are, so it doesn't really, um, expand or ripple into other processes. Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that from my brain. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kavals?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate all the hard work putting into this. Um, I believe I have two questions, and maybe they were addressed, but I, maybe I didn't hear them. The first is that you mentioned, Matt, and Rebecca, you reinforced that, um, well, first of all, in unincorporated Larimer County, we don't do a lot of multi-family stuff, but there seems to be a requirement that there, fifty percent of the affordable housing, fifty percent of the units have to be affordable. How would that requirement apply in the, when we're looking at what you had said earlier about accessory dwelling units? Maybe the, the cottage or the cluster development concept? Could, could you speak to that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Typically, uh, an ADU is just a single-family unit attaching in, something in their backyard. That doesn't necessarily fit the criteria of what, uh, expedited review process would be. But I think what Rebecca was referring to is, if we treat those properly and they can meet the, the standards of affordable housing that are defined by Proposition 123, then we would be able to defray some of the costs of that through other grant funding and help finance some of those improvements.
Thank you.
Through a building permit. Basically, we would be down, downpaying their building permit costs so that that's, they can put it towards affordable housing, but they have to meet the standards of 123.
If we, um, meet the affordable housing definitions, then even if it's an accessory dwelling unit or
Right.
Something that's not multi-family, we could still apply this expedited process, and we get brownie points and money and that sort of thing.
Yes, yeah. If an accessory dwelling unit, for example, was, um, you know, that the homeowner was willing to place a deed restriction on it, um, to keep it affordable as a rental at a certain level, that, then a hundred percent of that project would be considered affordable housing. And so it would meet the, meet the threshold here. Um, like Matt has said, that's, those accessory dwelling units go through just a building permit process. We don't have challenges meeting a ninety-day timeline with the building permit process. Um, so this would not really be a change from our standard practice now for building permits. Um, and that's where we anticipate seeing most affordable housing in the county, is going just through a building permit process. But if there were a proposal for a multifamily housing development or a triplex where two of the units are affordable or, um, so, something to that extent, or a duplex where one of the units is affordable, then this process could apply.
My second question, and, and maybe you've answered it, uh, and I think I brought this up the last time we had the conversation, and that is, um, site plan review up to ninety days, and then subsequent to that would be the building permit applications that could go up to ninety days. And I, I guess I'm wondering, a hundred and eighty days doesn't, I, I think I may have mentioned this last time, doesn't seem that expedited. So I wonder if you could speak to that, and perhaps how this process compares with, you know, the, the timeline for our current process. Thanks. Thank you.
Well, a site plan review process in Larimer County can take anywhere between four months and nine months. It, it just depends upon how fast the applicant refers back to us. So it usually starts with a referral, like we were talking, and there's a certain number of days that the applicant, uh, that we refer the plans out and we get to review them. And we rely upon fire departments and water districts and all that to comment on us. And then we return that information to the applicant, and then we wait for the applicant to resubmit. And sometimes, you know, they have busy surveyors or engineers that are working on other projects, and they might sit on the project for a couple of months. And so it prolongs that period. In this expedited review process, we, as along with, along with the developer, would be working together and having to commit to meeting certain timeframes so that we can get it done in a ninety-day period. So it probably speeds it up by fifty, sixty percent, or a hundred, you know?
That's, that's helpful. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would say that's pretty typical for other communities in the region, too, that 90 days is a fast timeframe for a development case that has the complexity of a residential housing development. A lot of the site plans that we process now are commercial projects, too, which also can be fairly complex. So the site plan process would really apply in those cases where it is a more complex project than a single-family home. And then, you know, new subdivisions, other case types like that, we would be handling separately.
One more, please. I just came to mind. Then I'll be done. I believe in the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned how you had reviewed other jurisdictions and their expedited processes. What did you learn from that? And what we learned, how is that incorporated into what we are proposing?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. One of the things we learned after that was everybody's doing it just a little bit different. I mean, it's just, some are very extensive processes. Grand Junction has spent months and months and months working on putting together a plan, and they were accepted. We looked at all the different accepted processes. And our partners over in Windsor had a very simplified process, which we actually talked to them and we cribbed off of a little bit. And we asked them, you know, can we mimic what you're doing using our processes and set up the timeframe? And so we learned that they were doing something very similar to us. And so we copied off of that and used that. But places like Grand Junction, I know they spent somewhere up in nine months just developing a system of how they were going to process things and how their systems were going to work and how they were going to help developers. So it just depends on the community, how complex it can be.
Yeah, I think some of the larger cities are, this meeting 90 days is much more of a challenge. And so I know Fort Collins got a grant to do an audit of their processes and really figure out how to achieve that expedited timeframe. Greeley has created a whole program that they've given, I can't remember what they've branded it as, but they've given a name to, to really try to attract affordable housing developers and sell this as an incentive. So, yeah, we took the lighter approach than what some of our other regional communities have taken.
And I think we did that with intention because, you know, we're a rural county and the only place that we're probably going to see much of this type of development would be in our growth management areas where we're, you know, which is a limited area and we can accomplish those things in those areas.
Thank you.
We've had one in 25 years.
Well, thank you for your work on this. And yeah, I look forward to seeing the resolution come forward. I don't think, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea to have this as a discussion item just because I think it would be, you know, news to the community about what we're, how we're working on this. And so, you know, maybe people who are less familiar with the Prop 123, you know, dollars and process might learn a little bit. So I guess we can think about that. With the, so it says to qualify, they have to have 50% of the affordable housing units. Is there deed restriction requirements on this?
I don't believe that it's required, there's a deed restriction requirement, but we could establish what that requirement would look like. It needs to remain affordable through the reporting period for Proposition 123, so at a minimum, that three-year period. And we can confirm the exact details with Aleah Rodriguez, our housing program manager, but we would be hoping for some guarantee that the unit would remain affordable beyond that three-year period as well, ideally in the form of a deed restriction. But there are also ways that we can report on our affordable units that don't require, on units that do not have a deed restriction, and those can still count as affordable housing.
Okay, good. And then with the $50,000 in grants, was that, were those dollars that would be used then to incentive dollars? Or can you remind me how we could use those dollars?
Yeah, there are a lot of possible allowable expenses and uses for that $50,000 funding. There's no local match requirement, which is why that funding's really attractive. What we have, we have not yet determined exactly how to spend that, and we want to come back to you all to talk through that. But there are some options to use it to fund some things that we've already identified for the work plan for 2026, such as updates to our comprehensive plan to comply with other recent state legislation related to strategic growth. So we have been trying to think strategically about the best way to use that funding to accomplish work that is, has already been identified in our work plan rather than creating additional projects right now.
That makes sense. Does it have to tie into in some way? I mean, clearly, the comp plan related to strategic growth would, but does there have to be a tie-in with affordable housing or housing in general?
It's, yeah, housing in general. It's fairly broad. So, you know, it can be used to work on process improvements, implement new software that may help speed up or create more efficient processes. It can be used on code changes and hiring consultant assistants for codes or code audits. It can be used on housing action plans. So there are several, it's a pretty broad range of allowable types of projects that all have a tie in some way to housing.
That's great. Thanks. Well, yeah, that's definitely worth getting. So thank you for expediting the expediting process. Commissioner, did I hear you had a question?
No, I'm good.
No, you're good. Commissioner Shadak McNally, anything else? Okay. Well, wonderful. We'll look forward to seeing the resolution come forward.
Commissioner Stevens, I just wanted to add, we had discussed this last Monday. I know you had been out of town with the NACO thing. So we had talked about trying to come back and let you have a chance to kind of be part of the conversation. So now we had a little chance to talk and we had a few more days to kind of chew on this before we came back. So I do appreciate you answering my questions. Thank you.
Yes, and I don't think we provided the slides in the packet.
No, I just finished.
Okay. So we will get those, we'll get those sent out, so you have a copy of the slides as well.
A lot of the information is in here, but I mean...
I had it all in there. I just, I had a great quick presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll get that for you and I'll use that when we present to you at Admin Matters.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I would support the suggestion about when we do have this at Admin Matters, that it'd be a discussion item for reasons stated. But I guess we have time to think about that.
Great. Yeah, no, thank you for that guidance, too. That helps us get it scheduled and we are hoping to get that scheduled within the next couple of weeks on Admin Matters so we can stay on track with our timeline.
Great. Thank you. All right. Well, we will move on to our next agenda item then, which is Community Development Director update. So Rebecca, you're up again.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of updates for you today. First, your land use hearings this afternoon and this evening. The 3 o'clock hearing has two items on consent. We have not heard of any large community interest or interest in pulling those items off consent. So those, that agenda stands as it's been published for now. The 6:30 hearing is for one discussion item on a cell tower. And we do know that there's some neighborhood interest and concern about that item, so we anticipate some amount of community participation, probably not a huge amount, but we do know that that's of interest and that's why we put it on the 6:30 hearing.
Great. Thank you. Any questions about tonight or this afternoon? Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just in the interest of coordination, there's a, there's a pretty good likelihood that we'll be done with the afternoon land use hearing rather quickly. And then we have 6:30. There's a big gap interval of time. Was the intention for community development to provide dinner or should we not count on that, which is fine by me?
You know, I haven't double-checked that. So let me, let me confirm that and get back to you all because I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
That's okay. Thank you.
We will let you know if we are feeding you. Yes, yeah. Thank you. One other update for you, on tomorrow's Admin Matters agenda, there is a new intergovernmental agreement with Berthoud related to fees for the Fire District. And so this is a conversation that you all had directly with Berthoud, I believe, a month or two ago. They came and discussed it. Those new fees have, impact fees have been approved by their, the Fire District's board. And so now they're coming to you all for your final approval, and that is currently on the consent agenda tomorrow. And if you have any questions, Amy White is here and Frank as well, if there's anything we can help speak to. Oh, Frank is not here. Christine is here. Sorry.
I don't think there are any questions. I don't see any questions. So, thank you.
All right. Great. That's it for my updates today.
Thank you, Rebecca. We'll move on to Leslie with the Community Planning Infrastructure Resources update.
Kind of at the end of my cord here, but hi, Leslie Ellis, Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources. And I missed seeing you all last week. I was away on some personal vacation time and so that was nice to have that, too. And then I participated on Friday in the Natural Resources Coordinator position at the Extension Office. So that was nice to meet the candidates for that position. So a couple of updates on some events coming up. We, next week at the work session, we have a couple co-compliance items and some further land use code items to discuss. Also, on November 3rd, we have the second showing of the Mirasol film and the discussion that happened at the Lincoln Center a few weeks back. And we have, again, really great participation anticipated for that. There are about 100 people signed up so far and we'll probably see more through the week. And the agenda is being adjusted a little bit to allow for a bit more time for the panel discussion because I think we all felt like that was very productive and there were some good insights and comments and want to make sure there's ample time for that. So that, that one starts at 5:00 PM. It's at Northern Water Offices. And then we will have the Ranch Master Plan coming to you later in November, and then we're scheduling other department updates and feedback items through the month as well. We'll have the transportation capacity expansion fees, the TCF fees for discussion on our November Planning Commission and Commissioners work session on November 12th. So that's another topic. You probably saw in the newspaper the update about the Ranch Phase 2 underway. And of course, there's a ribbon cutting for that tomorrow at 3:00 PM. And I believe you're all planning to participate, and that's open to others who are interested also and want to see what's happening and celebrate that next exciting stage at the Ranch. I'll just jump in if there's anything that you have comments or questions about.
Commissioner Shadak McNally has a comment?
And a question, if I might, Madam Chair. Thank you for all the work you're doing. I'm really excited to hear about the number of people signed up. I put it in my newsletter. I have a like 1,500-person newsletter and I got some feedback. I don't, I told them there would be snacks, but we had a little bit more than hefty snacks. So I didn't know if I was allowed to use the word hefty snack, hefty with the snacks or it was just snacks. So that's what I wanted to clarify, so.
Yeah, there's, there will be a nice buffet again, as there was last time with ample snacks.
Great. I've had some good responses, so I'm really hoping that we have some people come. So thank you. I told them everyone from, anyone from the county is welcome.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, there are the two locations really to just make it convenient for people's schedules and also to have a more northern location as well as a more southern location, but both sessions were and are open for everything.
I sent it out to Tulsa Valley, too, so hopefully we get some folks from up there. Thank you.
Good. Okay. So we have that ribbon cutting tomorrow at the Ranch and then on November 4th, also the Origin ribbon cutting at 4:00 PM is happening as well. So lots happening at the Ranch in keeping with the theme that you heard earlier from Louise. Yes.
Don't we also have, I thought it was maybe this Thursday, October 30th, some kind of a ceremony, topping out ceremony at the Emergency Services Building?
That's possible, but that's something that maybe Lorenza could tell you about.
Yep, we do. That one is Thursday at Emergency Services. So that one is also on your calendar. That is a topping out with the steel.
Yeah. I wanted to also let you know that we have started advertising for our engineer, County Engineer Director position a couple of weeks ago, and that's open for another month or so. Mark Peterson announced earlier this year to his staff and others that he's retiring next year. We don't have a date certain, but what we want to do is try to bring in our new director candidate to have some time to overlap and train with him. So that's the goal of getting this posted before the holidays and then having that time. And we'll do, as we do with so many director positions at the county, we'll make sure there are opportunities for our colleagues and partners and others in various departments to participate in that process, too, and make sure that we get somebody who's well-suited for our organization and to serve our community going forward. And then, well, last week, Rebecca and Danielle went to the conference, the APA Conference in Grand Junction, Western Planner, to accept the award for the Water Master Plan. And so we now have a nice shiny award that we'd like to bring back and share with you all at some time in the not-too-distant future. But thank you for going and covering that and representing the county, and it looks like it was a great event. We also heard, and I think this is probably old news for all of you, but I just wanted you and others in the community to be aware, we heard several weeks back about grants that were awarded through the Colorado Water Conservation Board. And there actually were two that the county applied for and were successful in receiving. And one is for a groundwater study that will start next year, probably in the second quarter of next year, and that will be in the Community Development Department. And then the second is for habitat restoration on River Bluffs open space, and that was our Natural Resources Department. And that would give us the funds to do the site assessments, permitting design and pre-construction support for that project. So that was really exciting to hear the news that we got, both of those. I think those were kind of the key things I wanted to hit on today. I did want to let you know, too, solid waste. There's, of course, a lot of activity happening up on the north landfill development. And this week and into next week, they're working on the lining for the new landfill, and it's on track to be largely completed by the end of this year. And the transfer station on the Taft Hill site continues to be under construction, also targeted to be ready for operations by, and both will be ready for July 1st of 2026 operations. And so we'll have Duane and his staff come in. It's been a little while since we've done updates on both the infrastructure and construction projects and then also all the many great things that they do out there currently at the landfill with our Household Hazardous Waste Program and the Mattress Program and so many other things that they do. So we'd like to have them come and share with you some of that work.
Commissioner Shadak McNally?
Thank you, Leslie. I know I had to miss because of the mud my in-person, but I, to, I'm very interested though to see how that lining goes. And I know they've been doing some filming of the progress and stuff. Is there a way, if we all can't get up there because they're so busy, that there be a way to have a, if they're doing videos or drone something, that we can maybe have a link that we could kind of watch it or see some of it? It's kind of once, those once-in-a-lifetime kind of interesting projects that not everyone gets to see a new landfill kind of going in. I'm just curious if that would, if they're, I'm assuming they're doing that since they already have some drone footage, but I'm just curious if that's something we could be, that we could watch. So, thank you.
Yes, yes. Great question. And yes, Duane and his team have been doing drone coverage and photos. And so we have, I think we can tell a very good story through images about the construction of that project from start to finish, and that would be something that we would be able to share at some point in the future.
Great. Thank you. And that's everything, Leslie?
That's everything.
Wonderful. Anything, Commissioner? Okay. Well, we have concluded our business for the day and it's 2:24, so we'll stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone.